The chair, you might have to, you might have to prompt me. I would have paid more attention last week if I'd known I was going to be running at this.
Yes, I think we should go ahead and call the meeting to order.
Um, okay. Do we do roll call or?
Yes, I can do roll call.
Okay.
Court right?
Here.
Malino?
Here.
Luther?
Here.
Juretsky?
Well, he was here.
I'm sorry, I was having a hard time getting off of you. He's still here.
Thank you. Graff?
Here.
McKenzie? I don't believe he's here. Martin? And she's not here. Thank you.
Um, I guess the next order of business is if everyone accepts the minutes as they were um, in the presented in the staff report? Hello?
Do you need a motion to approve them?
Oh, do I need a motion? Yeah, um, I guess, yeah. Do you want me to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve those.
I'll second that motion.
And you can do a verbal, all A's or if anybody abstains or objects.
So is, is it all A's? Does anyone object? It's hard to see which, what, um, I guess I could put it on gallery view. Everyone, um, okay with the minutes?
Yeah.
There we go. I'm on gallery view. I guess I gotta be on that if I'm running the meeting, huh? Okay. Um, is there any additional correspondence?
Uh, no additional correspondence, Madam Chair.
Okay, um, should we start with new business then?
Sounds great. So, I will start sharing my screen. I've got a little PowerPoint for us. So, what we'll talk about first here is some upcoming planning commission legislative work that we'll need to take care of in this next year. Hey Matt, I can't, it won't, it won't go anywhere with me.
Push the right arrow on your keyboard.
There it goes. So Shoreline Master Program update, we've been working on that one. And, um, comments and responses have been sent to Washington Department of Ecology. Uh, if the draft will return to the Planning Commission for final review and a recommendation to City Council. And the City Council will review and hopefully adoption prior to the end of June 2021. It's, that is our, uh, scheduled update that Ecology has, uh, presented to us that we're supposed to have it done by then and it's not good to be late. The R4 use zone bonus height provisions. Now, so during the comprehensive plan process, we spent, uh, about two and a half years with the community determining, you know, where the best places to, um, have the most growth. You know, where would the most dense places be in the city? It was determined that the downtown core area, the commercial, central businesses in R4 were ideal for that. And then leave the R2, the R, uh, R3 just a little bit more dense, R2 less dense, and R1 basically just like it is. So in those areas to meet some of those density requirements, they talked about some bonus height provisions. And that is in the R4 zone, the commercial and the central business district. We had an application or have and is going to prove for a five-story building in the R4 zone, 18th Street and, uh, O Avenue. Anyway, so that building consequently was approved and met all the requirements. And the applications were submitted prior to a moratorium that was enacted by the council. Uh, so that we could take some time to look at what some of the impacts might be based on what we've heard from some of the neighbors of that particular building. So, we'll be coming to the Planning Commission this, within the next three months with some alternatives that City Council will direct us to take a look at. And then through that process, there could be some code amendments to address those concerns. So what it all boils down to is the base building height in that area in the R4 zone has been 40 foot since about 1980 when our, our development regulations were first adopted. And with the bonus provisions, you can go up an extra 10 feet to 50 foot. And what we've heard from developers, contractors, building owners, is that extra 10 feet can make a multifamily building pencil. So that the, the prices are just right. Although in today's world, as everybody knows, materials costs have increased close to 30%, making construction almost unreasonable. So, bottom line on this, we're going to be coming to the City Council first. I'll be doing that in April to extend the moratorium for another six months because during the COVID process, we haven't been able to get a lot done. Um, now that we're rolling real well on our, um, Zoom meetings, et cetera, we'll be able to have the community join us. And potentially by the end of April, May, we could actually have meetings in the City Council chambers. We'll have to see how all that goes. Once the City Council extends the moratorium, I'll be starting my work with the Planning Commission and that will be an extensive process with the public. One of the next ones would be our tree preservation regulations. That, uh, is under, uh, chapter 1650 right now and it applies to all residential lands subdivisions and single-family permits. And so what, what, what the commissioners could do while we're looking at getting started on this is take a look at some of the other jurisdictions tree preservation codes and you know, if you find something that you think might work for, for Anna Curtis, you know, you can send that to us and we can work it into one of our first meetings. The issue is this has not been updated since 2006. So it's, it is sorely in need of updating and we'll want to move it out of Title 16 and then to Title 19, our developer regulations. So, we also then have short-term rentals in residential use zones. So, when we did the developer regulations in June of 2019 through ordinance 3040, we essentially, the council and Planning Commission recommended to the council essentially not having short-term rentals in residential zones. So, right now they're prohibited, though there are, I don't know exactly the number, but there are quite a few that were licensed before June 2019 that can continue as what's called an existing non-conforming use. And what we hear from the community and the neighbors from some of these short-term rentals is that it creates more traffic problems for the neighbors. And sometimes folks will do a short-term rental and they just get too many people in there and it becomes a mess for the neighborhood. Bed and breakfasts are allowed in the R1, R2, R2A and R3 by conditional use permit. So that would come to the city, uh, to the Planning Commission and the City Council and have public comment. Now, R4 and R4A is, they're permitted outright and then there are conditional use permit in the old town. We haven't seen a bed and breakfast come across our desks for quite a while. Because nobody really wants to, you know, provide the, uh, breakfast and just do all the work. They prefer to do a, a short-term rental. And then we have our 2020, 2021 comp plan and development regulation amendments. And so every year, um, starting in, uh, March 1st or the end of March, we accept proposed comp plan and development regulation amendments that would, uh, come to the City Council first for docketing, it's called. Then once it's docketed, it would come back, it would come to the Planning Commission for, uh, open, open public meetings and a public hearing and a recommendation into the City Council. And a couple of them that we already, that we had in 2020 and because of COVID weren't able to, to really get to was a comprehensive plan amendment to address short-term rentals. A comp plan, excuse me, a comp plan map change uh, down by 34th Street, which would be a, uh, a change from industrial to R4. And then a zero waste policy, which would be a comp plan amendment with goals and some policies. And so we don't know yet what's going to happen for 2021, but there could very well be some, uh, proposed amendments coming our way by the end of March. And then frequently flooded areas, which is part of our critical areas code, was audited by Department of Ecology representing FEMA. And they've made several recommended changes that are, um, pretty straightforward. Like getting some of the definitions changed to their new definitions. So what we'll do is we will be coming to the Planning Commission with all of those edits as soon as I get them done. And the commission will have a public hearing and then a recommendation to City Council. That's a fairly, I, I would like to say it's a fairly small, uh, project, but yeah, very important. And we need to complete that as we're moving along with the critical areas ordinance, which, uh, public comment period is open on that through the City Council now. So that's all I have on the slides. One other thing that I would also want to mention and I, I didn't get a slide put together with it is, so you're all aware of the capital facilities plan. And that line, that outlines what's coming up in the next few years for capital projects in, in city limits. And so a good example of that would be if we are putting a sewer line and, and where there isn't one currently. Or, you know, paving some roads or redoing an intersection to a roundabout. So that would have all these projects and we will be bringing that, the capital facilities plan, to Planning Commission on a yearly basis for probably, it'll be about four months before you see this upcoming one for 2021 amended. And then you'll see it in the coming years. And so what, what you'll see in that are all the capital projects that are being proposed. For instance, uh, you should see the new downfall project or any other projects such as intersection improvements, stoplights, if we're proposing anything like that. You would also any, see any improvements on the parks, uh, forest lands, things like that. And the Planning Commission would take a public comment, hold a public hearing and make recommendations on that plan to the City Council. So, having said all that, I know that was really short. We're gonna be busy. Right now, our, you know, staff is finishing up, getting everything done for Ecology on the Shore's Master Program. We have the third draft of critical areas ordinance out for comment. It was a 30-day comment period on that. And then we'll be going back to the council to, um, assimilate those comments and get some responses to them and, and have council review that, hopefully get it adopted pretty soon. So, um, you'll be pretty busy, although next, the next meeting you'll have off, but we're looking at getting quite a bit of work in front of y'all. And I think the capital facilities plan will give you that opportunity to see some of those projects like the 12th and Commercial Roundabout. And then make recommendations to City Council. Any questions for me? You're muted Frank.
Can't hear you.
There you go.
Shame on me. Um, two questions. The first one's a simple one. Uh, on a change in ownership on a property, on a property that's been used as a short-term state, is the, uh, the, the permit to do that cease when the ownership changes or does that just go with the property forever?
It, it ceases with property ownership. The license goes with the owner, not with the property.
Okay. And then, uh, looking into your crystal ball, where will the next roundabouts go in Anna Curtis? I keep hearing about one on 30th and R.
So we have Steve Lang with us tonight to give us an update on the public works end of things. And I think he can, he can answer that for us. But I think he tagged it.
Whether he wanted to or not. Um, anyway, alright.
Anything else? Perfect. Um, well, if not, I'd like to introduce Steve Lang. Um, Steve Lang is with our Public Works Engineering Department and Steve, he conducts pretty much all the development reviews of things that are going on here in town, does a great job for us. So Steve, I'll turn it over to you.
Alright. Good evening, Planning Commission. Anybody else that happens to be watching from home? Yeah, uh, for those that don't know me, I've, uh, I started here in 1991. And, uh, although I don't look that age, but it's been almost 30 years since I've been here come August 5th, so. Don and I have, uh, seen this town change, uh, pretty good over the last, uh, let's see, I think Don and I have been working together for about 27 years, 28 years. So, uh, we've, we've moved a lot of paperwork out, uh, of this office and, uh, we've done quite a few, uh, planning and City Council, uh, meetings over the years. Uh, Don had, uh, asked that I, uh, kind of give an update on, on some projects that, uh, Public Works has going on. And, uh, so I'm gonna see if I can't share, uh, share with me while I find my, uh... Alright. We all see that?
Mm-hmm.
Alright. So I kinda just went through and did the introduction. Um, we have, uh, four people, uh, on staff. Uh, three that, uh, run projects. Uh, I get to do some of the bigger projects, uh, roundabouts. And, uh, but I also work in the, in the planning department, uh, kinda as Public Works. And, uh, make sure that, uh, things meet the code for, uh, the Public Works needs.
Hey Steve?
Yes, sir?
Your power, your, your PowerPoint's not up yet.
It's not.
No, we just see your file index.
You can turn your other monitor.
Help me out here. I don't have another monitor. I just got the one screen. Okay, so, sure screen. Do we see it yet?
There you go.
Okay, alright. Yeah, so getting back, we have, uh, Tim Holman. He's, uh, uh, in our office and, and he, uh, spends quite a bit of time, uh, working with the Parks Department. Uh, he also does our, uh, street overlays projects. Uh, we have Jeff Beltermini. He's kinda 100% waterline replacement projects. And then we have, uh, Justin Simons, who's our Public Works Inspector. And this year, he's gonna be taking on the slurry seal projects and a portion of the sidewalk replacement project, so. Before I get going here, I kinda wanna brag a little bit about, uh, the Ship Harbor SR20 roundabout. Uh, that was a big project that we did last year through, through COVID, almost a year ago. And, uh, in fact, uh, about three days after it started, uh, we, we had the shutdown and we got declared essential and we were able to continue on, so. You can kinda see here 15 days into the project what we had here and we'd already done all the storm and all the water, so they, they were, they were ramping up the curbs. And 29 days, the project looked like this. So they were, they were on it. I think the big deal for us on this one is, is that we were 4.5% under the contract price. So, uh, for us, that's a, that's a huge deal. That's what we strive for is, uh, anywhere from, I don't know, 5 to 10% is normal, so we try to beat that. And I think, uh, the last roundabout I did, I was 0.9% over the contract amount, so I made up for it this time. So we'll scoot through these pretty quick. So this is just a, a vicinity map that identifies the waterline replacements for this year. And, uh, we, we have it set up to where the contractor, as soon as he starts one segment, he has to finish it to completion. And, uh, he has from April, uh, to October to, uh, do the work. This here's the slurry seal, uh, project. Locations. Uh, that just went out to, to bid, I think, today or yesterday. And, uh, construction timeframe on that, that's kind of a, a moisture-sensitive project. Uh, we've always tried to get it done before July, but, uh, everybody else and their brother is trying to get it done by July too, so, um, we've had it some years where we just didn't do them, even though, and we carry the contract over to the next year. So this year, uh, he hasn't set up to be done, uh, through July and September. The overlay project for last year went out, uh, kinda late, uh, and it got, it got bounced over to this year and Granite Construction out of Bellingham got the, got the contract. And, uh, the pre-construction meeting for this one's gonna be held April 6th, but, uh, if, if we were to zoom in on that, we, we got K Avenue, uh, from 12th to 20th. And then 20th over to, uh, let's see, 20th and K over to, I think J. Kinda tying into, uh, a paved alley that's just beyond, uh, the end of the road there. Then we got the 2021 year, uh, overlay. That's currently out to bid. And, uh, we have, uh, highlighted areas. The bigger one that we're doing is in the, uh, Clear Ridge subdivision, 41st. I believe it's going from A, uh, to H. And I don't know what that other one is. We zoom in. Yeah, 24th Street, M Avenue to Commercial. Then we got the sidewalk replacement project and this year it's gonna be done under, well, in most years it's done under multiple contracts, but, uh, we had, uh, a trip area right in front of Johnny Picasso's. And I just kinda wanted to share with you the, the, the size of root ball that, uh, we pulled out, which was honestly smaller than, than what we pulled out six years ago, a few blocks over, but, um, we basically just contained the tree and, uh, put an aeration system in and put root barrier all the way around it. And really, after what we've been finding is it's about six to eight years uh, for a street tree before it starts doing any damage. And so, uh, just from a public work standpoint, I think what we're gonna be doing as far as a, a maintenance is we can pull these trees out of the, out of the root well and, uh, plant them elsewhere so they can live elsewhere and plant another tree. Uh, what we've been finding is that, uh, the, the roots themselves actually get underneath. There's a layer of crushed and it, and it gets between the, the root barrier through the crushed and under the, under the sidewalk and then that's where you start seeing it heave. And so now when we go in and replace it, that root barrier is actually up into the sidewalk, so we can't do that anymore. Let's see here. So this is, this is one that, uh, I, I kinda like to show people. I call that Steve's brain. Oops. So, what, most people see, most people see a street tree right here. Well, when I see a street tree, this is what I see. So, we, we have a, a lot of different, uh, things that we have to look at. And what I did is some research and, and came up with ordinances, uh, the street tree committee, highways and local programs through WashDOT, the Title VI, RCWs. And, uh, there's just a lot of things that we have to go through, uh, when we, when we deal with sidewalks and trees and sidewalks are kind of a tough mix, but, uh, people like that, so we, we deal with it and, and, uh, and, uh, we just, we just pay for it. It was about a $25,000 deal to replace that tree in front of Johnny Picasso's just for a, a dollar figure amount. The other thing that we do for sidewalk, uh, replacement is we have a trip hazard maintenance and, and there's a company that comes in with a cutoff saw and they can trim off, heave sidewalks. So then that way, uh, we don't have to replace the panel. We can give it a little bit more time as far as, uh, a sidewalk life, if you will. And then, uh, on top of this, depending upon what we have left of the remainder, uh, we're gonna be doing some sidewalk, uh, replacement, uh, at 18th and Commercial, between 18th and 19th and Commercial and wrapping that block around O Avenue. And then there's a couple of, uh, blocks that, uh, in the O Avenue corridor that don't have sidewalks that we're gonna work to start putting sidewalks in those locations, so that way we can get a sidewalk all the way down O Avenue. And then start focusing up the, the side streets towards M Avenue, filling in the, the gaps and putting in, in, uh, ramps. And, and then I also wanna say, uh, go back to the, uh, overlay project. Uh, when we go through and do an overlay, there's the term may change the, the, the slope of the road. And that word may is a gray area that could be challenged in court. So, what we do as an organization is if we go through and do a paving project, uh, we go through and replace all the ADA ramps to be compliant. And, and that's something that's required and that, that word may could be challenged and we just decided we don't wanna have to deal with it, so. We, we have an ADA transition plan and we've identified all the ramps that need to be replaced and, and have slope levels on them and everything, so. And that's just something that, uh, we do out of, out of common practice. The next one is the wastewater treatment and outfall project. Eric Sharbeck, uh, this city engineer is working on this one. And, uh, the, the outfall basically blew apart as it goes under the, uh, port facilities here. And so what they've determined is this route that comes out of the treatment plant goes T Avenue to Third Street. We're gonna go up Third Street to U Avenue and then we're gonna go out to the bay. The second part of that is the upland part of it for the restoration. This is just a, uh... This is just, uh, one of, uh, two concepts right now of, of what the U Avenue park will look like, at the end of it when it's all said and done. But they're looking at going down at least 23 feet. And there'll be some rock, rock blasting, some chiseling of the rock and to make room for this thing. So that'll be a big project. And like the previous slide said, it's a $25 million project and FEMA's also helping pay for it, so. That's good for, for the project. And Frank, here's the, here's the next roundabout that's gonna be going into town. It's the one at 32nd and M Avenue.
Steve, can you blow that up some?
You bet. Yeah, if you guys have any questions, feel free to ask. I'm...
I have a question about the roundabouts and, and, and their basic purpose. Uh, are, are they really about traffic calming or are they, uh, about, um, s- safety? Uh, and the only reason I raise that issue is sometimes I feel that the, um, the radius seems a little small for the volume of traffic. the radius seems a little small for the volume of traffic uh, that they accommodate.
Well, I think uh, bo- bo- both are what you just said, traffic calming uh, as well as uh, um, traffic. So this one here, the traffic accident, so this one here in particular, uh, we we had a grant uh, come available, a safety grant. And uh, we came up with a a road plan for Anacortes. And we have to use the the crash data that is provided to Wash Dot, which is kinda interesting because we provide the crash data to Wash Dot, but it's in a format that they they have uh, and and they wanna use. And we identified uh, three intersections, uh, Seventeenth and Commercial, uh, Twenty-second and Commercial and Thirty-second M as as uh, uh, accident. So uh, we were able to obtain about a one-point-one million dollar uh, grant to put this roundabout in, so it's 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 much safer than than what's there now. Uh, slows people down and and definitely a a little bit easier than making it a four-way stop. So I I don't know if I answered your question the way the way you were looking or.
Uh, I was just wondering if there's a series of metrics about the volume of traffic and the size of the actual roundabout.
Oh, I'm pretty sure there is. I I just wouldn't have that right now.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah. So th- this one here, uh, it it's gonna be about the size of the, a little bit bigger than the one at the top of D and Thirty-second. It's gonna have a landscape in the middle, so um, it'll be grass. I'll put three trees. Um, I did that at Ship Harbor. I did it at Twenty-second. And I I kinda did a lessons learned uh, for the one at the top of Commercial uh, where they just planted the heck out of it and it looked really good and then, you know, ten years later, they wanna put an art piece of artwork that to me is not very enjoyable, cuz I never get to see it when I'm driving through the roundabout, cuz I'm paying attention to traffic. But it it looks good from a aerial photo from somebody's drone shot. And so um, the the art community uh, actually looks for places to be able to put artwork. And you know, it's it's kind of a a great centerpiece, you know. You know, I I like what Jack, what is it, Jack Dalton did out uh, you know, as you come off the ferries, you know, the the artwork that they put out there. And uh, they got a pretty active group out at the Clear Ridge San Juan Passage and they wanna they wanna uh, uh, maybe decorate up uh, the the one out there and 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 maintain it, but it's certainly an opportunity to be able to put a decent piece of artwork uh, in the middle and it wouldn't take that much to do it, you know, as far as cutting trees out, you know, so. Steve.
Question, when uh, for example, this one, uh, is the city, does the city have to uh, buy some of the corner property from the homeowners in order to make that work? Or are you forced to live within the constraints of what the city right away?
On this one here, we can live within the constraints.
Okay.
Yeah. So if if we start looking at roundabouts uh, along the commercial corridor, uh, I think the size that it would need there, we would have to be buying corners of of the of the right away to to make that work, but um, so far, uh, so that one out at Sharp's Corner, uh, Don and Fred uh, uh, saw the future and and and, you know, that was all set up for a uh, signalized intersection and uh, we wanted a roundabout. Well, at that time, uh, Wash Dot didn't want a roundabout. They wanted the signal. And uh, and uh, you know, we move ahead thirteen years and sure enough, now Wash Dot's into roundabout, so that's what went in. And we had an easement to uh, uh, be able to put that roundabout in there. And uh, in fact, that roundabout out there is about the smallest you can put in a on a state route. So um, so anyways, uh, no, we don't have to to get any right away for this one. So the next project that uh, that we have working is uh, kind of a uh, partnership with the Samish tribe, if you will. And and Eric and I, we have a quarterly meeting with the Samish tribe and they talk about projects and 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 we talk about our projects and 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 how we can help them. So they don't have an engineering department and we kinda told them that, you know, hey, we liked the partnership that we had when we did Fidalgo Bay RV Resort uh, out there, those improvements. Uh, why don't you guys use us as an engineering department and we'll help you out? Well, they have a a subdivision that's going in up off of D Avenue, uh, Thirty-fourth Street on the on the east side. And it's a cottage development and they didn't have enough room for a detention pond. So they they call up and they said, well, we don't have enough room on our on our property for a detention pond. Uh, where else can we put one? And I said, well, you know, you you got the Horizon Heights Detention Pond. You could certainly go in and upsize that one and that's just off of H Avenue. And they said, well, what if we don't wanna do that? And I said, well, about the only other option you got is to look downstream and 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 this is what you're looking at is the F-four basin. F-four is a a numbered drainage basin that we have in Anacortes and and uh, and it all goes out to a a certain outfall and uh, which is out at uh, what is it, Twenty-second and and just off of T there, just from the roundabout. So the city hired Grant Osborne, who originally did the modeling. And the the scope of work was, and so when you see, see the uh, the the red lines here, that that identifies with the the current modeling under ecology that with the existing pipe system, it 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 shows that it's gonna surcharge. Basically, the 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 manholes and catch basins are gonna overflow in a massive rain event. So we sent the model to Grant Osborne and we said, well, okay, so we have this this project and they don't wanna uh, put any detention. So what would it take to I'm gonna back out a little bit here. What would it take to make this whole basin flow control exempt? Uh, flow control exempt, what that means is that you have hydraulic capacity in a storm system all the way out to the bay, no issues. And so they came back and they said, well, okay, so if if you wanna do that, uh, you're gonna have to take and replace this line right here in red. And and so this little side one here is for another project that I have uh, over in this area here, so I just wanna focus on this little backwards L shape right here. So they're saying, okay, well, in order to be flow control exempt and 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 be able to just tie right into the existing system and not have any issues and all they have to do is provide water quality, they need to replace six blocks of storm pipe. Well, that's a pretty expensive deal. You're you're upsizing from uh, to a forty-eight inch pipe for six blocks. So to just just to put the pipe in the ground is a hundred ninety-two dollars a foot. And so uh, the the tribe, they said, well, we we kinda want a number, so we're gonna work a local uh, uh, agreement with them, inter- interlocal. And they wanted a hard number uh, as to what it was gonna cost. Well, what that did for me is I went through and uh, mapped out a hundred and twenty-eight years of old data and uh, all the way back to eighteen ninety-three. And uh, as-built at this whole area here back uh, uh, from the first lumber mills that went in. And lo and behold, I I find out that it's like, okay, so we're showing a section of pipe here uh, south of Thirtieth to be twenty-four inch. But yet the as-built information is showing it to be forty-two. And so uh, kinda went upstream here and looked and it's like, okay, something's funny. So last Friday, we went out and 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 verified that it was in fact a forty-two inch line and the line that goes up through Sugeo's here on Thirty-second uh, is actually a thirty-six, so. Uh, now I just sent that back to Grant Osborne uh, to to model the basin again with the new information and uh, to determine what kind of discrepancies we have uh, in in order to make it flow control exempt for the tribe, so. Um, that should be back this next week and then I can do an engineer's estimate and and uh, get him a a little bit tighter number, uh, if you will, for for uh, the interlocal agreement. And uh, you can kinda see here where um, you know, I marked that this is a forty-two and this is actually a thirty-six. And uh, sent that back to him, so. That's that's kind of a uh, fun process, but as far as mapping out the hundred and twenty-eight years, I got a history lesson. It was it was very very uh, intriguing to go through and just see history over time as it as it developed out from eighteen ninety-three. So the next one that, and I'm gonna I'm gonna go through this real quick. Um, so I did a presentation, so the R Avenue Long-Term Improvement Project, and Frank, this is the year thirtieth and R roundabout. So a few years ago, uh, Tesoro Endeavor Marathon, they came in and they invested millions of dollars to create a large transport corridor for Anacortes. And what that meant was all the overhead went underground. They moved, they moved lights uh, and and made sure that uh, they could get from the port docks out to the highway with no interruptions. Well, the one thing that uh, that uh, they came across was the signals at Seventeenth and Q. So in the past, they would have Wash Dot come in and drop the mast arms. Our guys would go out and set up uh, temporary uh, stop signs. Uh, corridor would go, the the transport would go through. Four days later, Wash Dot would show back up, put the mast arms back up, connect it. Our guys would pull the the signs and everything's back to normal. So what we did here, and and I'm gonna show you a a a real quick, brief uh, slide presentation, which means it's movie time. And they invested in this, the operation. Can you see that?
No.
No?
Right on the uh, on the left, it looks like it's supposed to be a white screen, which what you're showing us.
No, it's a white screen. You guys didn't see that?
It just says movie time in bold print.
Steve, I believe you shared the PowerPoint, not the full screen, so we're not seeing whatever you popped up over it.
Oh, well, what the heck. So, well, I'll just move, I'll just move on with the with the uh, the presentation. I'll just kind of explain it. All right, you can see that now? Yep.
Yeah.
Okay, sorry about that. So really, uh, so this is a swivel. And 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 the video was actually just a a a video of Justin and I opening the the signals. So what what it does is it is it opens to allow the transport to go through and then we can rotate the lights back. And there's a little, a little pin right here. Uh, we pull that and we we have and we can rotate it and then put these back. So um, we did a couple of transports uh, through there. They came through with these big units for uh, a clean fuel project they had. Uh, Transpact has come through with uh, some of theirs uh, coming the opposite way for the roundabout at Twenty-second. But this one right here, that thing's a hundred feet long, thirty-five feet tall, thirty feet wide. And uh, we made it through the roundabout and went through the signals, uh, not a problem. Um, so. What we ended up, uh, so so this here's kind of a a development uh, uh, a map that kinda shows what's happening. They got the Port of Anacortes. Um, you you got Dakota Creek at the top here. At one point in time, they were looking to expand. You got the Port's redevelopment project that they wanna do. Um, Seventeenth and Q, um, you got uh, MJB. The port has some property there that uh, still has not been developed. And and then we had uh, uh, the Salish or the Salish uh, motel that was just built at Thirtieth and Q. And uh, so there's some some development there.
Steve, why is uh, why is that R Avenue Roundabout going on thirtieth red and thirty-second?
Uh, the it's the, we kinda determined that that would be a good uh, uh, connection from Commercial uh, down Thirtieth and and then into the into the uh, industrial park. Kind of the gateway, if you will.
Okay. I I just see people coming down, going eastbound, crossing Commercial and then wanting to turn left on R. It sometimes it appears to be somewhat dangerous.
Uh, yeah, yeah, so.
Stop sign there.
Yeah. So and and I'll get to that here. So um, we have uh, we have the Port's redevelopment project, and this is last that I knew of it. You got kind of a master plan of MJB. They're already in with their plans and you probably read in the newspaper, uh, you know, that they're moving forward with their their uh, plan uh, to to develop out. Back in two thousand seven, uh, we developed uh, uh, some projects of kinda phases down the R Avenue corridor. And uh, we completed pretty much all of them, but uh, three, four and five. And uh, that's what this R Avenue Long-Term Improvement Plan, uh, when we design it, is is gonna take into consideration. It's basically this area here in green and 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 wrapping around here on Thirtieth, Twenty-ninth over to Commercial and then uh, a short section from uh, Thirtieth up to Thirty-second. So the the idea behind that, we did a traffic study. And uh, and just so you know, we have a kind of a uh, real-time traffic model for the city of Anacortes now. And so when a subdivision comes in, uh, you know, they pay for the concurrency and and TSI can plug in the numbers and they'll run the model and it won't just be in that specific location, but it'll be for all of Anacortes because it affects everything. What we found is that we had uh, four failing intersections in all of Anacortes. And you can tell that three of them right here, Thirty-one, Thirty-two and Fifty-three are all on the R Avenue corridor. So uh, we went out to and then I also got a crash test here, that there are crash data uh, on a mapping here of of the accidents that we've had since uh, nineteen ninety-eight. Listed here from uh, Twenty-second to uh, I think this is Thirty-fourth here. And you can see the state route. You can just see all of them right in here. And you can actually find that. It it's on an interactive map under Public Works, the GIS mapping. And and it'll have a node for a particular uh, accident location. You can click on it and it'll tell you what it is. Pretty nice. So the the scope of work that we we sent to uh, out to add uh, when we went uh, for the SOQ was that we wanted a roundabout that was very similar to the one at Twenty-second R. Uh, at the city council presentation, they 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 wanted us to look at a a dual-lane roundabout versus a single-lane roundabout and 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 to see how that would work. Uh, we wanted to improve Thirtieth Street from R to Q, curd gutter sidewalk. We wanted to improve Q Avenue from Twenty-ninth to Thirty-second, curd gutter sidewalk. And so the the improvements that the uh, uh, Salish Motel folks put in in front of their hotel, uh, we're gonna match into that. So they they excavated down and 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 I worked with them, so that way I don't have to touch anything that they've done. We can, we can match right into that. And then improving Twenty-ninth Street from Q to Commercial with a pedestrian crossing on Commercial. Uh, ten-foot wide sidewalk, multi-use sidewalk uh, on both sides from Twenty-second Street to Thirty-fourth. Extending the median, full median, all the way from Twenty-second to Thirty-fourth, so people won't be able to take a left-hand turn off of Twenty-eighth, off of, they'll have to do it at Thirtieth at the roundabout. So everything will become a right turn in, right turn out.
Including Thirty-second?
Well, and that that, under this here, uh, was the case, uh, Eric had had uh, made a note to me saying that he would be open to the idea of looking at a possible left-hand turn movement at 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 uh, Thirty-second. So one of the, one of the uh, and and we're gonna do a public uh, open house uh, where we can take input and ideas and share what we have. And what I'm hoping to do is get about the thirty percent uh, plans and uh, do a presentation and then and then just take comments back. Um, it it's kind of a one-time deal to, you know, if there's anything changes that we wanna do. I know I have a bunch of utility stuff that I'd like to do. Uh, Eric has some ideas on the striping of of, you know, the the two lanes, uh, the northbound and the southbound. Um, you know, we got that I pitched uh, road with the with the uh, on the southbound lane that's a little bit uncomfortable to drive when you're on the, on the, uh, east side of it. And, uh, you know, we can grind that down and, and pave it, things like that. We just now had a kind of a kickoff meeting today, so you'll, you'll see people out there, uh, surveying the project. And, uh, really, we just have, uh, you know, bring it forward to the people and say, here's what we have. And it, it's not gonna be like Commercial Avenue. It, it's, it's really just to, to make, uh, our avenue a little bit more functional. And, and how do we do that with, uh, with what we have there? Some of the ideas that I have, we got a lot of that grass area and we don't have water quality. You know, utilizing some of the landscape area, uh, within the median for, for water quality. And what that looks like, I couldn't tell you. Maybe some between the ten-foot strip between, uh, the curb and the, and the sidewalk, adding something there. How, how do we wanna landscape it? Do we want, what kind of landscape do we want? Do we want trees? What kind of trees? How tall do we want them? The trees are kind of an issue. People love their trees, but they don't want their view block. You know, that kind of conversation, so. Other than that, that's kinda all I have for you, so, uh, appreciate your time and thank you for letting me, uh, kinda gave you a little bit of an update, but, uh, so if you have any questions, uh, fire away.
Steve, I've had one. Is back on the trees in the city downtown, for example, given the lo- significant cost to repair, replace that? I know a number of communities in the south that were faced with budget issues and what they moved to was using faux trees or fake trees, if you will. Obviously, they're, they have to purchase, they're large and they're expensive, but once in, once out. Now, weather is a factor, but they get a lot of rain, uh, hard rain, not consistent rain like we do. I wondered, anybody ever looked at that as an alternative?
I, I cer- I certainly haven't. One of the latest things that I heard was, you know, why not pot them and, and put them in pots?
Yeah.
And, and, you know, then that way it's, it's like having them in the ground, but they're, they're above ground.
Right.
But, uh, that kinda got pulled off the table from management here and, and, you know, so we put the tree back in the ground. You know, sometimes you, you go do something and somebody says, hey, that's a great idea. Who came up with it? Well, I don't know. I just went and did it. But, uh, I was willing to do that, but I was told not to, so, uh, so the tree went back in the ground. So we're, we're just kinda stuck with the maintenance cycle of these trees and, and, uh, you know, it's just something else we gotta watch, right? So.
Right.
The, the last time that I, uh, fixed the sidewalks of which, you know, was the first year that we had done that, uh, back in two thousand one. And, you know, thirteen years later, they, they really heaved the sidewalk. Well, I didn't participate really in that first block, so I didn't know how the trees were installed. And, uh, until after, uh, we pulled up the sidewalk and then I, then I, then I did see it. But, you know, they're, they're at six years, almost seven years now, so, uh, seven years come December. So they're at that prime time to be able to pop them out and go plant them elsewhere, but.
Steve, uh, Steve Escary-Mollino, uh, when travel was permitted, uh, I was back in Kansas City and, uh, they had the same issue in, in one of their, uh, uh, almost garden city developments. And basically, they put their pots underground. Basically, you had the hole and you, you sized the tree in the pot to go back in the underground. And then when you needed to swap them out, you just simply brought a crane in and moved the entire thing as a unit. Anyway, uh, uh, I need to see if I can find the guy who showed me that in Kansas City. I'll send it to you. But I, it's been a long time since, uh, COVID's been around.
Yeah, so back in, what was it, two thousand one, two thousand two, they had a street tree committee, uh, formed. And, uh, there was quite a few people that, uh, got involved in it and, and, uh, you know, the, the way that we've put these things in is basically how the, uh, expertise, uh, had, had, had recommended it at the time. Understanding that new technology comes out and, and, uh, you know, there's probably new ways to doing things. But, um, you know, I, I, down on, uh, between Seventh and Eighth, I just contained them and, uh, figured that I'll just, we would just be pulling them every six, seven years until something comes up that, uh, you know, might be the... They, they lasted longer this round than they did the last round. When the, when, uh, they went through a local improvement district in the downtown and all the businesses, uh, did the sidewalk and did all the trees and, and, uh, you know, it, uh, certainly lasted longer than that. But it's not perfect, um, by any means, but, uh, certainly a, a learning process as, as we go along. And everybody has an opinion about it. I get it.
They do. They do.
Yeah. Yeah, and, and, um, you know, the trees have pretty, pretty, pretty good value, um, you know, for people here in town. And it is kinda interesting. You, you get the, you get the, uh, folks that, that have the businesses along Commercial and, and it's not very, uh, cheap rental, you know? And they spend a lot of money to get their signs up and then the city goes and plants a tree. The tree grows up and blocks the sign that the business owner spent quite a bit of money to put the sign on. And, and I've had it where I've taken a tree out and an owner came out and she says, hey, you can finally see my sign. You know, so, um, you got that side of it. But I, I've had, wh- when I did the one on Seventh and Eighth there on Commercial, I, I had a lady standing next to me crying 'cause we were taking a tree out, but yet I had a lady calling her husband saying that she's getting a tree because they, they, they got wood to go do, uh, the Arts and Crafts Festival and they can build their furniture. You know, so kind of a recycled thing, but. All righty. Well, thank you very much.
Steve, thank you.
Yeah, and, and really on that video that I was trying to show, if you, if you go to the Public Works, uh, there's a large transport and you'll see the, the video that I was trying to show that I wasn't successful, uh, to show you. But, uh, it's kinda unique and, and you can also Google, uh, YouTube and, and, and type in Black, Black Law. Uh, they're the company that actually made the swivel, uh, to be able to twist it. And, uh, uh, yours truly here, uh, got to participate in, uh, in one of their commercials that the refineries helped pay for to help this guy out. Uh, and that's, that's also, uh, kinda cool to watch too. So it has the large transport that they did here in Anacortes. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Steve. We really appreciate it.
Is there, is there any other new business?
No other business, uh, Commissioner Chair.
So should we adjourn the meeting? Are there any comments? Okay.
Sounds good.
Thank you all.
Thank you for your time, Kirsters.
Hey, guys.